Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is August 27th, 2024. We're beginning our meeting at 6:34 PM in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. Councilman Fitziamanu is online with us. Councilman Christensen is online. At the dais, we have Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune, myself, Councilman Norfelt. We're also joined with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We will now go to the opening ceremony, and I'd ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have our minutes of August 20th, 2024. Turn those to the council for discussion or emotion.
A motion to approve those minutes.
A second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed? Seeing none, the minutes pass. We'll now move to our public comment period. We will now accept public comment. Public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to three minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up, please give us your name and address, otherwise just your name. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. Excuse me. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Comments shall be limited to city business and matters within the purview of the city council. Speakers shall not expect any debate with the mayor, council, or city staff. The mayor, council, and staff may respond after the comment period has concluded. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, or members of the council. So our first person to sign up, number one.
Good evening, mayor and council. Daryl Curtis, West Valley City, 3860 South Marcia Drive. There's a couple of things I wanted to bring up. I wanted to thank the city council and everything. We've been here for 30 and a half years, and we got a street light across the street from us. It was wonderful. It's only taken us, taken 30 years to get that, but we now have a street light. It's made our neighborhood a lot safer, and especially right around our house. So thank you very much. It'd be nice to get sidewalks along 60th West and 64th West, right there by Hunter Junior High School. When my son was in junior high about 10, 15 years ago, a friend of his got hit by a car. He was fine, but it's nice, it's great to be more preventative than reactive. And it's only been, like I said, since I've been here for 30 years, that the, it's dirt on one side of the street or both sides of the street, depending if you're on 60th West or 64th West, running north and south. So the kids, when they walk home, they don't want to cross the street to go on the sidewalk. They want to go right there in the mud or walk into the street when there's snow and mud. So it'd be nice if sometime we could get some sidewalks there. And another thing that I had raised several years ago when Mountain View first opened is the engine brakes. Now, if you live anywhere close to Mountain View, you can hear them night and day. It doesn't matter early in the morning, late at night, and it doesn't matter which direction, southbound or northbound, we hear them. And I approached the city council and the cities and said, you know, all I want, or all we need is a engine brake restriction sign. And I know that that's not going to stop them, but it's a preventative. I mean, you have speed limits to prevent people from speeding, things like that. And I was told later that I needed to go to the, to the state. Well, I happened to go to a meeting about Banger Highway expansion. I talked to a representative from the state, and they told me it's a city's responsibility. And with government, I mean, I work for the government. I know people can get the runaround and they get, want an answer and want it resolved. I drove through Levan, tiny Levan, down south of Nephi, and they have a sign, engine brake restriction. Going into Colorado, Colorado, the whole state has that engine brake restriction. So I just would like to at least put a deterrent out there so to, we can get some sleep or not wake up from the engine brakes and everything else. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker two?
Mike Markham, two things. First of all, I think we need to give Chief Evans anything he wants. His crew was in my neighborhood in my cul-de-sac, to my neighbor's house over the weekend. She had her second heart attack, so they're taking her out of St. Mark's and sending her to, to the big hospital on 53rd because St. Mark's can't handle the problem. Another thing I'd like to bring up, which I've brought up time and time and time again. I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but whatever rules and regulations you all have put on code enforcement, it's to the point where nothing is happening. I turned in a list of some, some places in my neighborhood. I got the really nice acknowledgement back that they got the, the issue, but nothing has been done. There's never been anything come back to me about, you know, this is what we're done. It's complete. At least with, with parking, you get a note back and, you know, issue's been taken care of, but nothing is happening. The houses are still loaded with weeds. There's one house where everything is dead. Another house where everything they cut down and trim, they just stack it along the fence in the front yard to the side. And ironically enough, that is the, that is the same thing I see being done in the same country. They just stack it along the edges. It never gets cleaned up. It's just stacked until it deteriorates. If we're not going to take care of code enforcement, if it's, if it's a done deal, tell people like Jim and I, it's not going to happen, and we'll leave you all alone. But until you tell us to leave, leave you all alone, we're going to keep coming because I want a nice neighborhood. Jim wants a nice neighborhood. Most of my complaints are, you know, in my neighborhood. It's not around the city. Because if I did it around the city, there would be, you know, we've got, we've got tow trucks parked in the neighborhood. We've got large trailers parked in front of the garages that nothing happens. So I don't know how we get this stuff taken care of. The one house has been a problem house since they bought the house, since they moved in. The subdivision was new. They've got plenty of room to park the, their camp trailer that never gets used alongside their house, but they have some vehicles parked back there that don't run. So, you know, if, if, tell us, tell Jim and I, tell everybody, we're not going to support code enforcement anymore. It's a done deal. Let everybody go because it's just making people mad when nothing happens. I don't know if we're not getting support from everybody, or it's not being looked at, but something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker three?
Thank you, Mike, for that perfect entry, Jim Vissok. And I was going to wait till code enforcement at the end, but I'll start off with it. Now, how much longer do we need to wait? The house on 54, 50, on 54 and 41, it was a semi-property in the past. I talked about it, the same violations other than the semi being moved. The one fence post that was broken, that code enforcement sent back and said it's a small hole. We weren't going to worry about it. Now, that post is all the way broken off. The next panel is missing. Two more panels down now is coming out. Nothing has been done. This, I've been reporting this house for over four years now, and nothing is going to be, seems to be being done or going to be done. The one on 3850 South, across from Ascent Academy, new owners are there. They cleaned up the yard and stuff, but the whole front of the house still has nothing on it except the installation or insulation for the walls and stuff. I don't know why, you know, it's, it is a violation of the code. It's maintenance of structure. Why, why they're allowing that to happen? These are both in high visible areas. I could go on and on. Like Mike was saying, there's, there's a guy who's running a tow truck business out of his house. It's next to a park. And it's, it's no secret. He's been doing it for years. He's got a huge, one of those loader back, well, the tow trucks. At night, there's three of them there, and so two on the street, one in his driveway, all violations. It's, it's not, it's not going away. Now, into some good news. Shiny Shell Car Wash, who's been a great supporter of West Valley City since they've come to the city, is doing an event today out at their West Valley. Matt loves giving back to the community, and they're doing the Giving Tree event. The police department is out there, and as of the last text I just got from him, they're just under $1,200 for the Giving Tree. That's really good. And once again, we want to keep our businesses in West Valley City. Sign ordinances, we could lose some businesses because of petty sign ordinances. Master Muffler changed their sign without getting approval, and they're getting harassed. There's another business, Roberts Brothers Sightings, has owned their property for a long time. They want to put up a sign. Their sign's already there. They want to put up a Roberts Brothers sign, and their sign still works. It's not rusty. It's painted. It's lights up. There's nothing wrong with the sign, but the code enforcement guy is harassing them about it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Speaker four?
My name is Ruth Helvey, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that proposition to allow the storage units on.
So ma'am, there'll be a public hearing on that, that you'll have unlimited time to speak at that time if you would like, instead of the, just the three minutes?
Okay.
So that's up to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Sorry about that. I should have explained that before we started. Is there anyone else that wish to speak in public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and turn it to the council and staff if there's any comments.
Mayor, I would just mention the code enforcement a little bit. And I've contacted staff about some tow trucks that I think we had to talk about, but, but also outside storage. I think I've seen that being a real problem in some areas. So also on the website, the code enforcement website, the map, when you click on some of those notices, they're over a year old. It's still showing active, and so I'm like, what, what's going on with those that are still outstanding a year later? There's probably a story behind that, but it'd be nice to know why. So, thank you.
Okay.
All right, seeing no others, we'll move to our public hearing. We have application ZPZ 1, 2024. This application, applicants have requested this general plan zone change in order to develop a self-storage facility on property located at 4053 South, 7200 West. They felt this would be the least impactful use for the property due to the overpressure zone. The applicant is also requesting setback requirements being eliminated as part of the development agreement for safety and security concerns. So our action items after will be ordinance 24-20 and 24-21 and 24-81. So is there any questions or comments from the council before I open the public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public comment period to those who would like to speak on this issue.
So my name is Ruth, and I live right behind, just to the east of this place that they want to rezone, or not rezone, but build this storage unit area. We have a lot of concerns. It's an area that is growing a lot. It's an area that's very residential right now. You can see across the street from that property is the new park that's going in there. There's new residential housing that's going in, in the triangle with a zigzag in it. Just across from 41, there's, it's a very residential area. There's nothing in the area that is two-story. Some of these super industrial things across the street, but in our area, where you've allowed us to build our homes and make this nice subdivision, this is a very residential area. I used to be in real estate. Anytime you have, you know, we always know it's location, location, location. And anytime you have a negative, it's a black spot. This is one we won't be able to erase. I realize that, you know, anytime you're on the edge of something, it's more likely that, you know, your, your property values will go down. I just didn't expect that in the interior of a block that we would end up with that sort of thing. You know, I, I used to live very close to 35th, and I know that the people who live right on 35th have, you know, not only do they have a traffic problems, but the valuation is not what it is two streets away in the subdivision. I'm basically a block away from the major roads either way. And yet, this is going to come right to my fence, not even with 10 feet of leeway or the 20 feet of leeway that you're supposed to have, whatever it is. But this is a real estate issue. It's going to affect me. It's going to affect my family. I don't know about the lighting that's going to be allowed in this, this project. We don't need any more lighting. All of our bedrooms are at the back of the home, which will face this property. I don't know, I don't know how. It just doesn't seem like a very appropriate use. Last time I mentioned, and it is very true, that sloping to the east, it's a gradual upslope. Sloping from the north to the south, it's a rather steep thing. So this property that you're letting them build on is the primary premium property of the whole street. It's going to be above the houses. It's going to be in a primary state over the other homes. That does make a difference with our home values. Last time I was here, I didn't mention it, but the week before that meeting, my daughter died. And it was so important to me that I came to this meeting asking you, please don't allow this. It's just, and I thought we had this settled. I understand someone's changed their mind and asked it to be revisited. But I ask you to think about this, and I ask you to think about, would you like this kind of a thing behind you? Would it permanently affect your home properties' values? I know that he's about to tell you that it doesn't make a difference as far as home value, but we all know, location, location, location. Any kind of a negative is going to be in that person's mind when they're looking at your property. That can't be erased once that property is developed. Please look at the area. Please look at the north side of the street. It's extremely residential. Please think about that. He's got plans for a two-story property there. And that, we just don't feel like that's right or appropriate for our area. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wish to speak to this issue?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Board, and I live at 4018 South 7105 West. My first question is, why are we revisiting this? This was voted down in June. When I spoke to Steve at zoning committee, he said that Tom had changed his mind and wanted it readdressed. What changed your mind? I called up the message. Nobody called me back. Like Ruth said, we thought it had been put to bed. Plans aren't being changed. So what changed? Why are we spending time and dredging up something that already, the city already addressed and voted down? Doesn't make any sense. West Valley was very adamant when they built Park Vista, which is where we live, that you couldn't have chain link, you couldn't have wood fences. You wanted it in an upgraded neighborhood, and yet you want to put in a business that backs right onto the properties. Across 4100, the houses that are being built are million-dollar homes. Would you build this next to those million-dollar homes? Ours are now, Ruth built her house. It was over 500,000. Now they're more like eight or nine hundred thousand. So the view is, will be gone. I'm concerned because we have pretty low light in the back of us because there isn't anything other than what used to be Hercules and the lights from the park that across 72. So you build this, and you're going to have security lights all night long. So is our backyard going to be lit up all night? I like to sleep, and I like to open windows in the summertime. You know, I don't want the light shining in my windows. So I'd like an answer from the city as to why you're doing, going after this again. What changed? So, that's all.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wish to speak to this issue?
Good evening, mayor and council. Jim Vissok. I'm going to speak in favor of this. The reason being is us spending a lot of time in this area, delegates' houses and meet and greets, and in Magna driving down 41, and all the building that's going in this area and being as, almost nothing else can be built there because of the overlay blast zone. I think this is a great thing for this area. I've even gone as far as saying the city should sell their piece of property and make it all one big storage area, also for boats and RVs, which we don't have enough in. And I think it'd be a very successful business on this corner because of all the people going to Magna and these small homes that Ivory is building over there. They need a place to put their storage. When I talked to the applicant last week about it, and he informed me about what the, what the fill rate is for the storage and what the need is, because I thought there was a lot in West Valley City. And it's amazing how full they are. It's in the 80 percentile where, where it's full. But the other thing is, he told me, which I didn't know from the original thing, is they'll be doing boat and RV storage there also, which we don't have a lot of in the city. And once again, if you're living in Magna, and one of these, these houses are built on top of each other, it's the perfect thing for it, and it brings business revenue dollars into West Valley City. And, and that's what I like to see. And directly across the street of it is the military property. The million-dollar homes are actually down the ways. So it's not right across the street. It is Navy property, and whether that's going to be developed or whatever. And then the park is complete. The Magna Park is a complete park. So, you know, since barely anything else can go there, I think this is a good use of this property, and I hope you guys vote to let the builder build this and then maybe sell them your property.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wish to speak?
My name is Ray Helvey, and we live at the 4028 South 7105 West, so this does affect about the corner of our property. The idea that we're going to have possibly a two-story storage area, now possibly with boats and other things there, means that this is not going to be at all a residential-type neighborhood anymore. We will be hearing noise from them. We'll be seeing lights from them. It will change our property values. I don't care what people say. I, I heard them say, when we were here in May about this, when it was turned down, that a property like that doesn't affect property values. I'd like to find out when that was done. How many years ago was that study done? And what were the property values of the surrounding neighborhood? I doubt that they were in the $800,000, $900,000 range. There is going to be an effect on us. We cannot move again. I am retired, military disabled. My father-in-law is with us too. He's also military disabled. He's in his 90s. We cannot move again. We cannot afford to not be there. If we lose that house, or if we have to get out of the house for some reason, where are we going to go? There's no rent anywhere that's less than $2,000. I have a, a military loan on that with like a 1.25%. Where am I going to find that if I have to move out again? Okay, this is a major, major effect on us. I realize that the people want to make money. I realize the city probably gets something out of it. But for us who have to actually live there and live with the issue, it's not a positive. It just isn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Markham, I'm very familiar with that property because we used to fly down 7200 and jump the railroad tracks onto 41 when I was a kid. Great, great. We buried the nose of my Ford into the road one day. But I don't know what else would go in there. But also, I'm old enough to remember the days back when they had a major explosion at Hercules, and they were out gathering body parts from that whole area around there with the people that were killed and blown up at Hercules when they had that major explosion. Now, that has to go back when I was probably maybe 16 years old, something like that. I wouldn't have bought any place around there with Hercules and the explosion stuff that's there. But you know, if a home builder wanted to buy that, that piece of property, the way everything's going, we haven't had a home builder step up and want to build there. Has anybody, home builders, wanted to get into there? Have we had anybody inquire about building, you know, houses in that corner? You've got the hill where, where you have to go up the canal and the railroad tracks and, you know, being by railroad tracks isn't someplace I would want to buy, build a million-dollar house if I could. But I don't know what else that property would be good for. I can understand these people's worry about property values and the walls and stuff, but I don't know what else you could put in there or would go in there, you know? Victor's tires or, or something maybe could squeeze in there and take it all, but I, to me, it's good storage as long as the, the property is maintained, and hopefully we would have people that could. This is wishful thinking. Never mind. I was going to think we could have people could stay on top of it, make sure it was maintained and, and looking good, but that might be over the top. Anyway, I don't know what else you'd use the property for.
Daryl Curtis, I, you know, I look at that property. I've passed by it several times and have wondered who owns it and so forth. Are we just, what do we want to attract? I mean, do we want to be known as West Valley City, the city of storage units? I mean, right along 56, there's at least five or six storage units right along 56 from, from 201 to 54th. And so, I mean, do we need another storage unit? I mean, so, so people, you know, don't get rid of things. They want to just put in the storage. Is that the best use of this property? You know, what, what do we want to attract as a city? What do we want to be known as? I mean, we used to have, for example, Hale Theater in West Valley, so that was an attraction. Now we don't have that. So what do we want to attract? Do we just want to attract more of these type of things, type of businesses? We, we are running out of green space. You know, it's always nice to have property that is open. Yeah, maybe not something right now, but maybe in the future, there could be someone that would like to buy it, maybe have their own house or their own complex or whatever else. But, but what's interesting is the people that live by it are the ones that are concerned. Those that don't live by it are the ones that, oh yeah, this, this is fine. Just go ahead and do it. So I, I would hope that we could just come to it. So I, I would hope that we could just come to a, a happy medium somehow. Zoning is the only thing that we have as a city and as citizens. When it's zoned a certain way, we, we anticipate that those zones are going to be upheld. If it's, if it means to be changed for some reason, then that's, I can understand that. But we, we, I, I think we just need to make sure we're doing what is best for the city, what is best for the community and those that rent, live around it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this issue?
Paul Swenson, Mayor Lang, council members, Mr. Peely, Ms. Kamic. I want to show my appreciation for revisiting this project and thank you for relooking at the information. I want to give one quick update in that, the home, there are two homes on the property. Nine people were living there when we purchased the property. We've been able to place five of the people in other locations that are not part of the blast zone. The other four people, a small family, uh, two small girls and the parents will be placed, we're placing them in the next couple of weeks, so they will be in a safe area and be taken care of. We appreciate you taking a look at this. I'm very humble that you are doing that. Do you have any questions for me?
To the council?
Um, some of the neighbors have expressed concerns about the height of the building and the lights. Um, can you address that?
I, I can. We absolutely will, let me say this first, comply with every regulation of the city. We want to be positive and positive neighbor to the neighbors as well as to the city property, which you will be our neighbors as well. The uh, we'll comply with all those regulations. We have no intent to shine lights on the neighbors. We have intents to make the property safe. And that is one of our major goals, to have it safe, to have the appropriate lighting, the appropriate security. So that we don't have people in, as they call dead zones or anything like that. As far as intruding on the neighbors, we have absolutely zero intent, zero intent to intrude on the neighbors and we're open to discussions with the neighbors. In fact, we've had discussions with two neighbors that we have made promises to, that if this moves forward with, that we will comply. That they have requested that we build next to their property with the ten-foot height. And I believe you have in your packet emails from them stating that is their request. So we will stand up to that because that's what they would like from a security standpoint. Also, they requested that we go back down to what the height of the property was at the time. There's been a bunch of fill brought in there. And before we even agreed to with the development agreement, we agreed with them that we would do that. Thank you.
And then can you tell me what the lighting will be?
I can't state explicitly what the lighting is as to each spot that it will be, but it will be on the areas that people can get to, as well as in the indoor building, of course, that will be on and off. But it will be out front, for instance, where we have the security gate to make sure we don't have people sneaking inside. There will be a security gate that they have to have passage to get in during operating hours. So we're not going to allow people in after hours and it will light up that area, which would be on seventy second West to the road, the entrance there.
And what will the hours be?
Um, we haven't exactly set the hours, but normal hours would be like eight to eight roughly. No- nothing after what I would call after hours, after ten o'clock. That's too late for me. I'm in bed. So no, they will be kind of a standard operating hours, eight to eight is, is what we've targeted.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
We look forward to working with the city if this is approved. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I say something, not the, not question. Um, yeah, one particular person asked, uh, mention my name, so I gotta respond back to you. I don't have to do that. Yeah, and not, not you. Yeah. Uh, my vote.
Let's close the public hearing. Okay, seeing no other comments from the audience and we didn't have anyone online, correct? Okay. So we will close the public hearing portion and I'll turn it to the council for any comments and then we'll work down the ordinances.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I appreciate the owner also explaining very clearly about this and I'm very you know, have a few for you, you're concerned about this property, to be honest with you. Uh, also, uh, you mentioned about my name, so I gotta, uh, I don't have to share about how I vote, but I can do that. I think that, that like, you just heard a few minutes ago about Bron Khan, you can see, you can hear that. That's why my stock question before I vote, um, support for this, I mean, not support for this one, because the south side of this property, we have a the city property. And I was thinking about maybe the city gonna buy this. And that's my question. I didn't have a chance to ask the city about it and that reason why I vote for, what I vote for. But now I found out the city not gonna buy that. So I think that's the best fit for this property is for the stores.
Okay, any other comments from the council?
My comment is short. Um, initially, very pleasant conversation with the applicant. Um, no real issues necessarily with the proposal i- in itself. But uh, when it comes down to uh, requests around uh, housing, access, affordability, neighborhoods, development. Um, we get those calls and emails and voicemails every week. Um, the number of people who've asked me for, uh, you know, new storage options, uh, in this part of the city. I think maybe our friend Jim uh, was the one today who raised that, but I haven't heard much of that. So my vote doesn't change from the original.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Whitstone?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to mention I, my vote will continue to vote against this. Um, I know there are concerns about the overpressurization zone. Um, and the limitations that that puts on this particular property. Uh, but once it's built, that's permanent. The overpressurization zone may go away. In fact, it, it reduced a couple of years ago. Um, who knows what the future holds and um, we have a lot of, the perception is that we have a lot of storage units in our city and um, they're not the most pleasant thing to look at or, or to live next to. And so those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I uh, I hear what you're saying, Will, and, and that, and that's making sense, but, but uh, we've had this overpressure zone for a very long time and, and uh, and housing is not an option for this, this landowner. At least in the, the first part of this property and without that, I, it doesn't make much sense to do much else there. I think by putting the, the storage buildings right on the property line, that minimizes any negative effects to, to the, to the neighbors. Um, I think the lighting will be on the interior and will not be pointed toward the residences. Storage units are not my favorite. But uh, but I don't see a good use for this, this property otherwise. And there are people who need storage units and, and use them. So I'll continue to vote in favor of this proposal.
Um, I was just going to ask one question. Mr. Pastrick, do you mind coming to the mic and answering one for me? Sorry to put you on the spot with no warning. So it was mentioned that there are homes going on, are going in across the street to the south? And is it the one that kind of jogs?
It's actually quite a ways east. So if you're looking at this map, you, you actually can't, it's just barely on the edge of the, the map there. Um, where you can kind of see the, the jog in the property line. So homes will go up to that line, but not further west of that.
Okay. I was thinking she was talking about the triangle piece itself, so I was trying to figure how this property is in the overlay zone and that developable is not.
Right, so the, the triangular shaped piece is still on by Northrop, so that's, um, don't anticipate that, um, well, going residential.
Okay, and there is, I mean, I think the applicant at very first brought residential to us for this property. And we told him that wasn't a possibility because of the overpressure zone. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, our first action item is to consider ordinance twenty four dash twenty. So I'll turn this to the council for discussion or a motion.
Um, motion to approve ordinance twenty four dash twenty.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
No.
Councilman Whitstone?
No.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that was the general plan change. So ordinance twenty four dash twenty one is the zone change that would take this property from agriculture to manufacturing. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
I move for approval of ordinance twenty four dash twenty one.
Second for that.
Can we have a motion and a second? Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Whitstone?
No.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
No.
Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. And then we have to consider resolution twenty four dash eighty one that um, authorizes the city to enter into a development agreement with Mr. Swenson for the property to be developed. So to the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty four dash eighty one.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
No.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. And we do appreciate everyone that came out on this issue tonight. We'll now move to our resolutions and we'll begin with resolution twenty four dash thirty one. This amendment to the Personnel Policies and Procedure Manual. It was last updated in twenty two and the changes of employment law and city practices have made the current manual out of date. Approve, approval of this resolution would allow for the update of the manual to be compliant with current practices. Turn this to the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty four dash one three zero.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolution twenty four dash one thirty one. Uh, this is a lease portion of a purchase of a fire truck. It is intended to last seven years with a four point seven six interest rate on, um, and a total of four hundred thousand to be financed. The city will own the truck at the end of the lease term. So I'll turn this to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty four one three one.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now finish up with resolution twenty four dash one thirty two. This is an actual purchase of a fire truck using the lease from a previous application. This is a type three wildland fire engine and the city can use, that the city can use seasonally. Fire department revenue streams for the payment, which equates to no cost to taxpayers. It specializes in wildland firefighting and will also be in rotation for deployment outside the city, county and state. Agencies will pay a rate fee for the apparatus and personnel. So I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty four dash one three two.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session at this time, so we just have one more action item.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.